All right, we're good. All right, good morning, everyone. March twenty twenty-three meeting of Oldham County Planning and planning, I'm Greg here. Before we get started, ask everybody to join me in the pledge. And if I may ask everyone to join me and put in your electronics to silent for the duration of the hearing, please. This morning, first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from my fellow commissioners. We're going to reprint those so that you have a full set of the pages, and we'll shove the approval to the end of the hearing. And with that, Mr. Urban, first item of business is going to be?
Actually, we have an addition to the agenda, and I know Barry Baxter can explain why we're taking this action today, but we have two appointments that we have to make. One of them is Will Douglas, who is the Planning Commissioner, and the other is Charlie Ward that we're recommending to the Board of Adjustments. Barry, I'll let you explain why.
So normally, it is something that the fiscal court is responsible for doing. Judge Vogel makes a recommendation to the fiscal court, and then the fiscal court would approve appointments to these two boards. But under the circumstances, I think it just kind of slipped through the cracks. And if more than sixty days elapse from the period of time that somebody's term expires, the vacant seat is an appointment made by the Planning Commission. So you all now have the opportunity to appoint to fill both of those vacancies. And Jim has already indicated who we would recommend that you appoint.
Judge is here to speak to both of those. But Barry, the one thing that I think is important to note, especially with the Planning Commission, when Mr. Douglas was not reappointed, he still sat and made decisions, but-
Correct.
Those decisions stand as a voting matter.
Correct. And this came up, there was a question raised about some other actions taken in front, I think, of the Board of Adjustments. I did some research. There's an Attorney General's opinion directly on point that indicates that if there is a vacancy, a person continues to serve until such time as either they are reappointed or somebody else is appointed to fill the vacancy. And they have full authority to act in that situation.
Judge, come up and speak to both of these members.
Everyone, nice to see you all here today. This is just about a full board, isn't it? Are we?
Mr. Douglas.
Missing. All right. Well, I think the circumstance has already been pretty well summarized. Would like to have William Douglas and-
Charlie Ward.
Charlie Ward, I'm seventy-five, the name goes right off the top of my head here, reappointed to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments. I would have done that at the end of the year, but, you know, for a variety of reasons, and I was sick and had to change the personnel in my office and whatnot and so forth, these slipped through the cracks. So when it came up to reappoint him, Barry noted that, whoops, sixty days had gone by, these appointments now fall to the Planning Commission. So I'd like to ask you to reappoint these individuals. I think you all work with William Douglas. You know he's a dedicated member of this commission. And Charlie Ward is a new member of the Board of Adjustments. He actually replaced a strong member, Mike Riley, who was with us. And Mike had certain health issues and had to step down. And so Charlie was very willing to take his place. So both these are excellent representatives in our community, do a good job of examining the facts and making the best decision that they're able to under the circumstances, just as you all do. So anyway, appreciate the reappointment of these two individuals.
Great, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should take these separately. And one thing I want to point out, we know Charlie Ward Jr., he's with the Health Department. This is Charlie Ward Senior that's being recommended to point to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, so let's begin with the appointment to the open seat on the Planning Commission. And as noted, Judge Vogel has recommended Will Douglas, who I think you all know. So I will open the floor now for nominations. Mr. Hampton. We have a nomination for Will Douglas. Do I have a second? For Will Douglas, do I have a second? I have a second for Mr. Elder, thank you. Voice vote, okay with this? All right, we'll move into a voice vote then. All discussion, sorry. All in favor of appointing Will Douglas to the Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's like sign, and motion carries. All right, so now we open for the Board of Adjustments. And in this connection, Judge Vogel again was good enough to give us a recommendation of Charlie Ward Senior. I will now open the floor for nominations. Ms. Nasser, thank you.
To nominate Charlie Ward Senior to the Board of Adjustments.
We have nomination of Charlie Ward on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. We have a second from, oh. Forgive me. All right. Once again, we'll move into a voice vote on this. All in favor of Mr. Ward for the Board of Adjustments, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion carries. All right. Bring us to our regular docketed items. And again, we'll move the minutes to the end of the hearing to provide for an opportunity to get a full set. Ms. Edgar, will you read the first docket item, please? Oh, beg pardon.
Thank you.
Staff. Give them a swear, please.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
You want to read the docket?
Docket PZ-two-three-dash-zero-zero-five. An application has been filed by Oldham County Public Library Incorporated for the approval of a community facility review for the Oldham County Public Library located at three thousand Paramount Commons, Goshen. The property is zoned R-two residential district, R-four residential district, and AG-one agriculture district.
Mr. Vogel, I assume you'll be providing staff presentation. We get to watch your tech skills here as we approach. Pretty dazzling.
Always a challenge. All right, good morning. Brian Vogel, Assistant Director, Oldham County Planning Development. The docket item before the commission this morning is a community facility review for proposed library branch in the North Oldham area, referred to as the Goshen Library Branch at three thousand Paramount Commons. Basically, the location is at the intersection of seventeen ninety-three and Highway forty-two. Proper notice of today's public hearing was given between putting it on our website, the Oldham Area newspaper, and then mailing notices to the joining property owners. This is an aerial photograph of the area. This is the intersection right here of Highway seventeen ninety-three and Highway forty-two. The proposed location, and we'll get into this in more detail, is right here on a six-acre parcel. And it's part of the overall Paramount Farms residential neighborhood, which you see over here in the lower right corner of the aerial in terms of what's been developed to date. Highlighted in red is something more specific. The North Oldham Lions Center is right here, intersection of seventeen ninety-three, right here, and then the North Oldham School Campus is located right here. And then the zoning for the area, it is comprised of three different zoning districts, which is not relevant to the proposed use because community facilities such as libraries are allowed in any of those three. Because it is part of the larger original parent parcel of Paramount Farms, there's a little bit of development history here. So it's just got to condense down to stuff that has come before the Planning Commission for public hearing. So the first thing was in August of nineteen eighty-seven, a zoning map amendment and preliminary plan approval for what would be the future Paramount Farms Estates with an approval of three hundred and two single-family parcels. And then at the intersection of seventeen ninety-three and Highway forty-two, in June of ninety-eight, an application was made on a ten-acre parcel for the construction of a senior assisted and brain injury center. And in June, that was denied. But the applicants amended their plan and came back before you all in September of ninety-eight and got approval of that. And then in January of ninety-nine, we did approve a minor plat that allowed the creation of a ten-acre parcel there that is now a portion of which the proposed library. So the senior assisted living center has not been built. The minor plat for the six-acre parcel where the library is proposed was approved in December of twenty-twenty-one. And then just this past December, you all gave preliminary plan approval for basically what is Phase Three of Paramount Estates. And highlighted in yellow on the picture is the proposed library. So the, one of the main entrances, which will interconnect with the existing Paramount Estates, is right across from the Highway seventeen ninety-three and Highway forty-two intersection with the library proposed right here. So the proposal is a community facility review. In our zoning ordinance, you all review this and basically either accept the proposal, or you refer it back to the applicant and say, hey, could you, you consider making these particular changes to better benefit the community? And the primary factor that you all look at is whether or not the proposed facility is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Here's a site plan, which at the very end, we'll put back up on the screen so everyone can see. Of the proposal, it's a seventeen-thousand square foot building. There are public amenities on the outside of the building, including a sidewalk along the future Paramount Commons Road, a walking trail around the perimeter of the property, a children's garden, and then an outdoor amphitheater. Julie Williams is here with the library. I'm going to let her really speak to the inside of the building because she knows libraries. And, you know, as planners, we know site plans. So what you're all looking at is, you know, is the proposal in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan does address, in general, the future provision of community facilities. And here in a minute, very specifically, a library branch in the North Oldham region. It's highlighted in bold there that, you know, basically, the comprehensive plan anticipates that we wouldn't have a need for the expansion of community facilities, that we go through a public input process, which is what we're doing right now, and that the infrastructure should be created to help provide lifelong learning opportunities in Oldham County. And the portion of the comprehensive plan that specifically addresses a library branch in the North Oldham area, which is what is proposed with the Goshen branch here, is that it basically acknowledges that both the South Oldham and the Mahan Library branches are part of the library's long-term capital plan, and that it's anticipated that those facilities would either be expanded or a new building would be built, in which case this is what the libraries are requesting. So in summary, it's a community facility review. I'm going to step to the side here, but be available for any questions, and let Julie come up here and speak to anything when it's the proper time, Mr. Chairman, related to the inside of the library itself.
Mr. Vogel? Ms. Williams, welcome. Wilson?
I'm Julia Wilson. I'm the director of the library. Uh, one correction to the site plan. I didn't tell Brian we had to cut the amphitheater and children's garden and walking trail because of budgetary issue. I'm sorry.
Get you sworn.
Oh, sorry.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Like I was saying, we had to cut the children's garden and amphitheater and walking trail, some of the outdoor features of the library, unfortunately, because of rising costs, as you all know. We're hoping to maybe still do those, but we had those bid as alternates with the general contractor so that we could, you know, look at the most important items budget-wise. So those are not on there. But the rest of that is correct. The library itself will be seventeen thousand square feet, including a thousand square feet for a county clerk's office. So the North Oldham Clerk's Office is going to move into our space. So it'll be a great community spot for both of those things. We will have an expanded children's area and an activity room for kids to enjoy programs and storytime. We'll have a reading terrace that looks out onto the land there. It's a beautiful spot. The children's area looks out toward the Lions Club property, which is nice with their walking trails, and just has a gorgeous view of, you know, the Goshen area. We're hoping to, you know, work on, we've got sidewalks there, and I know the neighborhood across the street's hoping to get some sidewalks. Jim and I have been working on that so that children in that area can cross the road and have access to the library there. Other things, you know, typical library things we'll have in the building. We have a meeting room for, you know, different groups to use. We've got a presentation kitchen, which should be really cool. I don't think there's anybody else who has one of those in the county. So we've been working with the Health Department on getting that set up for the best uses for the community. Obviously, reading areas, coffee area, you know, things to make the library nice and cozy for people to come and enjoy.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Anyone have questions for Mr. Vogel or Ms. Wilson? Hampton.
The present stubber road there, is that, is that the same as will be the entrance?
You're talking about the Little Country? No, okay.
Talking about the fourth leg of the intersection where the traffic signal is.
It's, you all reviewed that and approved the location of that as a future entrance to Paramount Estates Phase Three.
Let me be sure. And number two, I'm just not quite clear on this, is when this opens, does the Mahan stay open, or is it, Mahan close?
It will close, yes. And the nature preserve plans to use that facility for other things.
Thank you.
For the questions. Fair enough. All right, Mr. Urban? Please, Mr. Finney.
What, what is the total square feet of the library itself?
It's seventeen thousand one hundred feet, but a thousand feet will be used by the county clerk's office. So the library itself will be sixteen thousand.
Thank you.
The parking's on the back side. Make sure I'm looking at this right, back here? Oh, there we go. Yes, yes. Yeah, there's staff parking on the side for both library staff and the county clerk's office staff. And then where he's circling is the parking lot for visitors.
Ms. Davis, that all you have. For the questions? Did I remind everyone to hit that microphone before you begin speaking? All right, Mr. Urban, point of order. What's next?
Well, if you're done with questioning, is there anybody speaking in either favor or against?
One speaking in favor of this application, of this presentation. Anyone present? And none? Anyone speaking in opposition? Fair enough. We're going to move into questions of the commission? Right? If any further questions, and if no further questions. Mr. Marsh, did you have something? No? Okay.
On page four in your staff report, there's a recommended motion and findings. I didn't hear anything that would implicate that you would actually consider having the library better comply with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. So there's a suggested acceptance motion. And again, this is just accept or, or not accept with recommendation. So there are three objectives. You can add more if you care to, based on the testimony and evidence that you heard today.
All right, everyone clear? Fair enough. We'll go ahead and open the floor for motions. Mr. Marsh?
That we accept docket PZ-two-three-dash-zero-zero-five, the community facility, because the proposed North Oldham Library Branch seems to be in accordance with the following objectives. And it does create an infrastructure to support our community, our county. And I support this motion and move that we approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Counsel, we have an adequate motion on the floor. Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Mr. Hampton? And Mr. Ender? Thank you. Okay. Ms. Edgar, unless we have discussion, we have a new discussion. Move into a roll call vote.
Ms. Davis? Elder? Mr. Ender? Mr. Finney? Mr. Hampton? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Winters? Mr. Klingemfuss? Ms. Nasser? Ms. Walzer? Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And motion carries by a vote of zero. Twelve? At eleven? All right. If everybody's good, we're going to roll on into the next docketed item. Ms. Edgar, you ready to read the docket for us?
Docket PZ-two-three-zero-zero-six. An application has been filed by Mason Construction and Development LLC for the approval of waivers for required minimum parking and minimum lot size on approximately one point two-six acres for a proposed self-storage facility. The property is located at six zero zero seven Claymont Village Drive, Crestwood. The property is zoned C-three commercial.
Mr. Fisher, you have the staff presentation.
All right. Ryan Fisher, Senior Planner with Oldham County Planning and Development, one hundred West Jefferson Street. So as Ms. Edgar stated, this is an application that's been filed by Mason Construction and Development LLC for the approval of their development plan with waivers for both required minimum parking and the minimum lot size on that one point two-six acres that they are proposing to be a self-storage warehouse facility. Property is located at six thousand seven Claymont Village Drive in Crestwood. And as Ms. Edgar stated, it is zoned C-three commercial. So here is the site information once again, C-three, it's currently undeveloped, sits on one point two-six acres. A little bit of the site history, on March sixteenth, just a couple weeks ago, the Oldham County Board of Adjustments approved a conditional use permit for this same facility, mini warehouse on that one point two-six acres. That motion passed four to zero. So that had to go for the conditional use permit to the Board of Adjustments. Their motion actually is pending the approval of the waivers today. So the waivers and the development plan are before you all today as the Planning Commission. This is very similar to another one you all heard back last June. If you all were here for a self-storage facility behind the Cracker Barrel, that ended up going to a LaGrange Board of Adjustments for approval of the conditional use permit. So if any of you all can remember that one. So a little bit of the case history. Those adjoining property owner notices were mailed on the fifteenth of March, and that public notice appeared in the Oldham era on the ninth of March. So here is the property in question, Claymont Village Drive. All right, Veterans Parkway coming up here, South Oldham's football field on the other side, Christian Brothers Automotive and Burger King just here to the left to give you an idea of where we're looking at. Here is the zoning on the property, currently zoned C-three. So the applicant is proposing an indoor self-storage facility, mini warehouse, which once again required that conditional use permit in the C-three general business district. And as you saw in the site history, that was approved back on the sixteenth by the Oldham County Board of Adjustments. County Board of Adjustments. And just here is from our regulations showing where the mini warehouse and self-storage facility required that conditional use permit. So the proposed plan, before you today, outlines a three-story, 220 by 80 square foot climate-controlled building. Footprint is seventeen thousand, six hundred square feet, and the overall square footage is fifty-two thousand, eight hundred square feet, and the proposals for 300 storage units. You all were provided the full-size set of plans with your packet, in addition to an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven smaller copy showing the site. Here is that same site that you all received in both full-size form and eight-and-a-half-by-eleven. So Section 260-dash-400 of our regulations talk about conditional use standards for self-storage facility, and looks at three different areas, shall be used for storage only. Plumbing is prohibited, and then the minimum lot size is three acres. So I've got that highlighted because that's one of the waivers before you today, is that minimum lot size, as they are on 1.26 acres of land. Here is just the excerpt from our regulations, 260-dash-400, showing that minimum lot size of three acres. So those waivers, both of them that we're looking at today, is a waiver from the conditional use section 260-dash-400, number three, is that minimum lot size being requested. This will allow that site of 1.26 acres to be used for a self-storage facility. So the applicant is requesting a waiver really of that 1.74 acres that makes up the difference. And then in addition, they're asking for a parking waiver. So the current regulations, which you'll see here in a second when I get to the next slide, will require a minimum of 30 spaces. That's based on our regulations in Section 280-dash-zero-eight-zero, which is our parking regulation. So that shows one space per 10 storage units, plus one space per employee. So the applicant has proposed 16 parking spaces, so they're requesting a waiver of that other 14 from that requirement. So here is just, once again, in 280-dash-zero-eight-zero, showing our regulations where the self-storage facility requires one space per 10 storage units and one space per employee. Those, all those regulations were also included with your packet at the rear of the staff report for you to look at as well. So in summary, the applicant's requesting a development plan for their self-storage facility, along with those waivers for the minimum lot size and the minimum parking. So really have three motions on the table. So that first one being a waiver of the conditional use section 260-dash-400, number three, for minimum lot size, this will allow the site of 1.26 acres to be used for that self-storage facility. Conditional, conditions of approval on that is that waiver shall only apply to the plans reviewed and presented here today at this March 28th, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. The second waiver is for the waiver of the 16 parking spaces. Once again, we've got the current regulations there showing where they would have to have 30 spaces, and they are proposing 16. Once again, that waiver shall only apply to the plans presented here today at this March 28th, 2023 Planning Commission public hearing. And then the last one, just being the approval of the development plan for their self-storage facility, with once again the potential conditions of approval, it shall only apply to the March 28th, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing, pending anything else that you all might want to add or amend at that stage. So with that? Any? Yes?
Ryan, when the Board of Adjustments approved the conditional use, they placed some conditions on that approval, didn't they? You're wearing here, we'll, if you can, look in the file if you don't have it.
I will.
Let's, we will end up adding those to this development plan.
Yeah.
It's really kind of.
I think the only other one was the one about pending the waivers. I think there were two. So the one was the plans presented to them at the March 16th hearing, and then I will check that when I go sit down, but I'm pretty sure the only other one was pending the waivers.
On for a sec, if that's the end of your presentation.
Mine.
Any questions for Mr. Fisher? All right, we'll follow back up on that.
All right.
We will now move into presentation from the applicant. And everybody who is going to provide testimony, we'd like to go ahead and get you sworn.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburner.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. Good morning. Thank you for spending a little bit of time with us on this case. I'm here on behalf of Mason Construction and Development, and we're going to talk about a proposed development, pardon?
I'd ask for the record.
It's Cliff Ashburner with Dinsmore &amp; Shoal, 101 South Fifth Street, Louisville 40202. I have Mike Hill with Land Design and Development here with me. Mike's firm drew the plan we're talking about today, and of course, Dan Perkins with Mason Construction and Development. So I think Ryan covered the big points, and I just want to kind of talk through a few things with you. As was mentioned, the proposed development, the conditional use permit was granted unanimously by the Board of Adjustments just the week before last. This is a, it's a little bit of a difficult site to develop, as I'll show you in these photographs, and one of the things that anytime you're designing something for a piece of property, obviously you're looking at the zoning, but you're also looking at the uses that are around it and trying to think of what impacts will this proposed development have on those adjacent uses. That was a lot of our commentary before the Board of Adjustments was about that. You know, the property is zoned C3. C3 is a general commercial zone that allows a variety of uses, including things that you might not want directly adjacent to residential, like a car wash, restaurant, things like that, that are, that can be louder, can generate more traffic, can generate more light, that would be of concern to residential properties nearby. So that's why we think the use is a good use, and that's why the Board of Adjustments agreed with us unanimously that the use was appropriate for this particular area. So as you see on the screen there, this is the development plan kind of dropped into an aerial photograph. You can see the residential in Claymont Springs. You can see the office that's directly to the right in the photo, and then the uses that Ryan described, the automotive use and the Burger King that are directly to the left. One thing about those, both of those uses obviously are right up on the bypass, and they have access off Claymont Crossing. This property would only have access off Claymont Village in the rear because of the relief on the property. So here again is the site plan. It's a pretty simple site plan. It's a single building, accessed off Claymont Village Drive. It's a little bit bigger than the office building to the right of it, but it is, once it is constructed, it'll be about the same in terms of the height of the building and the way that it falls off toward the bypass. So again, this is the site plan. There will be parking located kind of behind those trees. You can see the little notch in the landscape area. That's where we're proposed, we have some proposed parking, and then the remaining parking will be kind of nearer the building in a parallel fashion to allow people to load into the building. These are just some of the other mixed commercial in the area. You've got, obviously, it's not just commercial, you've got the school across Veterans there, you've got general retail, you have some restaurants. One other thing to note, there is a significant amount of residential in and coming to this area, which will help drive demand. In looking at the other storage facilities that are nearby, most of them are what you would consider kind of the more traditional mini storage uses, where it's a kind of single-story garage buildings lined up in a row. There are not many, if any, of these climate-controlled, completely interior storage uses in this immediate area. So this is the building, the office building that's just to the right. This was also built by Mason Construction. You can see on the first floor, I'm sorry, on the kind of the street side, it's a single-story, and you can sort of see the fall-off in the back. One thing that's different about the proposed development compared to this is that there will not be any parking in the back. All the parking is up on the street because frankly, just don't need very much for one of these storage uses. This is the rear of the lot. The property line is just outside that silt fence, and there is a significant amount of right-of-way along Veterans between the roadway and the property. Obviously, that state right-of-way is in the control of the state. This is just looking out at the bypass and across to the school. This is the proposed building. It's more contemporary than obviously the offices to the right there. It's a mixture of masonry metal panels. You can see the access, the main door there and the loading area. Then this is the rear. Again, that mixture of materials, it's entirely enclosed. These buildings are designed to be, I guess, less intense-looking than other warehouse uses, and they're designed to be safe, meaning that they are, you have to have a code to get in, they're fully cameraed, the entire site is fully cameraed, the lights are on so that, you know, folks who are coming in there have, you know, have that feeling that they're not wandering into a warehouse where they don't know exactly what they're going to find. And that's one of the real selling points of this kind of, this kind of storage. So I can skip that. We, I use the same presentation for the board of zoning adjustment. So the parking waiver we are seeking is really based on the age of your regulation, for lack of a better word. When we were before the Board of Adjustments, I think the question came up, when, when did the parking requirement for storage come into being? And nobody really had an answer because it predated everybody who was in the room. I think that the parking requirement that is in place now is really for the more traditional single-story garage kind of facility, not so much this internal storage facility. So that's, you know, that is the primary justification. The other justification that I'll bring to your attention is that this body, and as Ryan mentioned, the La Grange Board of Adjustments, saw a very similar development last year on Crystal Springs Drive, not too far from where we're standing today. In that case, even with a larger building, they had about the same amount of parking as is proposed here, and that was, that was approved. The other thing, the other waiver that we are seeking is the lot size waiver, and again, that is, I think, a creature of the age of the regulation. There's really no need for three acres when you have a facility like this. This is much more compact and can work in smaller settings. With that, I think that the, we would ask that the waivers be approved, reminding the commission, of course, that the board of zoning adjustment has already seen the conditional use permit, and so has passed on the use, and has passed on that unanimously. And if there's anything you'd like to add?
Dan Perkins, 6244 Old La Grange Road, Crestwood, Kentucky. Going back to the parking, the building, we have pushed the building back. You can see my right side over here, where the building is touching the 50-foot building line, and it really couldn't be moved any far forward to get the parking in the front, and it's impossible to get it in the back. It's even going to be, it's really going to be hard to build the building on the site due to the fact that, you know, the steepness of the lot in the back. So I purchased all three of these lots from a lender on Claymont Village Drive. So I own the corner lot to the, if you're facing the building from Claymont Village Drive to the left. I built the building to the right, the office building. We had plans to build an additional building there to the right of that building before the economy fell apart and all went south. But I do own that lot also to the right. So my thoughts on the lot to the right, it is for sale for another developer to develop something on. Office has kind of gone away, that product is, is, I would say, non-existent, but, but there's just really not a lot of Class A office space being built at this time. So this is really a good use for the property. That's really all I have to add.
Mr. Perkins? Mr. Ashburner, does that complete your presentation?
Thank you, sir.
Is anyone else here present wishing to speak in support of this application? Seeing none, we will move into those opposed to the application or having questions of the applicant. Anyone wish to provide testimony or ask questions of the applicant? All right, once again, seeing none, we'll move into final statement of the applicant. Mr. Ashburner, anything to add?
Very well. Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Urban?
So as Ryan pointed out, you have really three decisions. The first one, I'm sorry, before, before we go there, there was a question about the Board of Adjustments' conditions. Do we have something to fill in that gap?
Yes. So I got it. Staff worked hard for me downstairs and sent me the presentation from that. So that was OC 23-dash-zero-one-one. The only other one that was on there was the conditional use permit shall be subject to the waivers being requested at the March 28th Planning Commission hearing. The only other one was that the plan's presented at that particular meeting, so.
Mr. Fisher? Okay. Any questions? Mr. Urban?
Any other questions from the commission?
Correct. Mr. Marsh? Clarification, this storage facility has no space for cars, boats, campers, anything like that. It's all internal climate-controlled, correct?
Beach or outside storage, it's all interior, and it's all mom-and-pop storage. I developed the Buckner. Built the Buckner Point site, corner of Cedar Point Road and 146. We have both interior and exterior. We found that a lot of businesses are using this. We had UPS came in, they rented three units, and over the holidays, delivered items to the units, and then had individuals come pick that, those items up and distribute them around Oldham County area. So several different businesses have been using them, so.
That then, everything will come in and out of those front doors and be supported from the parking directly in front? So if those UPS trucks, everything would go in and out of that if they did that?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh, anything additional? Mr. Kling and Foose?
Of the units inside? They range from ten, five-eights, all the way up to ten-twenty's.
Anything additional? Ms. Nasser?
So is there going to be any buffer zone in the rear of the property?
There is a buffer zone there now. There's trees along the bypass, so if you can visualize the, coming in off Claymont Village Drive, it's going to be a one-story building in the front, it'll have bi-parding doors to enter, park in the front. The back of the building on the bypass will be three stories tall, and so that means there's a two-story basement, 24-foot wall poured in front, and then the back wall will be a grade, and really for the bypass, you're only going to see probably one and a half stories of the building over the trees, so it'll be landscaping in the front.
Ms. Nasser, you good? Okay, for the questions? Mr. Ander?
One manager. There might be a manager and assistant on some days, but one employee.
Mr. Ander, anything else? Okay, other questions? All right, Mr. Urban?
We're at a.
I believe we're at the point where we have no opposition testimony, and we've completed the questions, so we'll move into the motion-making phase of the discussion. We're going to bypass the final statement.
Well, the, as Ryan pointed out, there are three motions. The first would be consideration of the minimum lot size, Section 260-400, from three acres. Their proposed lot size is 1.26 acres, so the waiver request is 1.74 acres, and you can put a condition on it, this is going to be redundant, but that the waiver only applied to the plan reviewed at the March 28th, 2023 Planning Commission public hearing.
All right, everyone clear? All right, we will now open the floor. The first motion will be for the minimum lot size waiver. Mr. Hampton?
I have a question as far as how we're doing the vote.
Sure.
If if I wanna move to deny, do we have to go through all these first three first?
Well, the the first one is whether or not the lot size is appropriate. And we're gonna take each one separately, and if for some reason the waiver for the minimum lot size didn't pass, you wouldn't have to worry about the other ones.
Okay.
All right, floor is open. Mr. Hampton?
I move to deny the this for the minimum lot size on docket PZ dash twenty-three dash zero-zero-six. I find we do have regulations on this, and while I know they are flexible, this seems quite extreme at almost fifty percent of the waiver.
Counsel, do we have an adequate motion on the floor? All right, do I have a second? I have a motion to deny on the floor, do I'm looking for a second? All right, we have a second. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. All right. We will move into roll call vote. Do we want to do discussion on this?
Oh, you can if you want to, if any commissioners.
Have any discussion on the on the motion?
Question.
Please.
Motion to, with no being, do not accept.
Correct, kind of that reverse. It's a motion to deny. If you support the denial, then you vote yes. If you do not support the denial, then you vote no.
All right, everybody clear? Move into roll call vote, Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Marsh. Don't. Walzer. Ms. Nassar?
No.
Mr. Klingemfuss? Mr. Winters? Ms. Jones? Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
No.
Mr. Ender? Mr. Elder?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edgar, and the motion fails on a vote of nine to two. All right, so we will now move back into reconsideration of the same waiver. And we'll open the floor now for motions on the waiver for minimum lot size. Floor is open. Mr. Finney?
Chairman on docket PZ two-three zero-zero-six. I move to approve the minimum lot size waiver is that this does fit the use for this particular piece of land. I don't believe that that there's anything that would be detrimental in this situation and it's conforms to the use of of the properties, neighboring properties in the situation in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Counsel, do we have an adequate motion?
You're gonna include the one condition of approval that only applies to a plan submitted today.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Ms. Davis, second? Discussion? Ms. Jones?
So the, when the minimum lot size, you know, was established, that is more for the traditional spread out, one-story, you know, everybody. So this, I feel like it's a different thing, being all enclosed in one entrance, that it doesn't it doesn't need all that area to spread out.
I'm getting too far out on a limb to say that when those regulations were developed, storage units of this type weren't really a
Different, right.
product in the market, so that would be an accurate reference.
And I'll simply agree.
Further discussion? All right, Ms. Edgar, we will move into roll call vote.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Douglas?
He's not here, he's not here.
Sorry. Mr. Elder? Mr. Ender? Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Mr. Winters? Mr. Klingemfuss? Ms. Nassar? Ms. Walzer? Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and the motion for approval of the minimum lot size waiver carries by a motion by a vote of nine to two. Now move into considerations of the minimum parking waiver. And, Mr. Urban, do you need to bring this up?
Just it.
Fair enough.
By majority vote, you agreed that the minimum lot size is okay and you've granted a waiver. The next is for section two eighty-oh, oh-eight-oh, zero-eight-zero. The minimum parking requirement is thirty spaces, the proposed parking is sixteen, so the waiver request is for fourteen spaces with the same condition of approval. If you choose to approve it, that it only applies to the plan that was reviewed on March twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Floor is now open for motions. Ms. Nassar?
Docket PZ two-three dash zero-zero-six. I make a motion to approve the waiver for the minimum parking for for this development because based on the topography of the area, also the nature of the use of the business, it complies with the comprehensive and comprehensive plan for the use of the area.
Thank you, Ms. Nassar.
To the plan reviewed today on March twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Ms. Nassar. Anything to add to that, Jim? Counsel, do we have an adequate motion? Do I have a second? Second. Davis, gotcha, thank you. Discussion? We will move into roll call vote, Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Davis? Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Ender? Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
For Winters? Mr. Klingemfuss? Sir?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer? Or Marsh?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and the approval of the minimum parking waiver is passed on a vote of nine to two. Now move into motions for development plan. Mr. Urban?
Now that you've by majority vote approved the waivers, you're asked to consider a development plan. There's a motion for either approval or denial on page four in your staff report. I'm gonna ask the applicant to listen. I'm gonna add a binding element, which is typical, but I wanna make sure it's in here because I did receive a call from the adjoining property owners who were concerned about lighting. So there'll be two proposed conditions of approval. The first is the approval shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the March twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission public meeting. And the second is that a lighting and landscape plan shall be submitted for review and approval at the time of the construction plan submitted. That's fairly typical, but I think, and I've talked to the applicant about working with the lighting to make sure it doesn't shine into the bedroom windows of the adjoining residences. Do you have that?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. All right. You've heard the framework here for this, and the floor will now be open for a motion on the development plan. Mr. Hampton? Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor, do we have an adequate motion?
Sure that there's much that can be done on the motion, considering that you've already approved the related items, but I understand Mr. Hampton's complaint, so.
Why do we have it?
Well, I mean, I think you get to a certain point in the in the process and, you know, they've already approved the site waiver, and so now we've got we've got a building that has to be built, so that's the development that's gonna be. So are you you complaining about the structure that they?
I'm complaining that we're putting a square peg in a round hole.
Well, and I guess my only point to you is you you made that initial motion related to that same thing. I I understand what you're saying, you're you're.
I have a right to to bring this up, then I'll retract it.
Well, I I guess you you've always got a right to to make a motion to deny something. So you've made a motion to deny something, which is an adequate motion. I'm just telling you, at this point, the waiver for the site has already been approved. The parking waiver's already been approved. So the question is, is whether or not this building, as proposed, is appropriate for the site, I think is where we are on the question, and you're indicating you don't believe it is.
I don't, so all I'll say is, if we take this and it doesn't matter, then I'll retract it. It's to me like I do have a right to bring this up.
And and I I do not disagree with you. I I'm just telling you, at this point, the question is, is the is the site plan.
I got it.
I'm humoring.
Thank you.
There.
If I can just add, you know, the your motion included a rehashing of the waivers. You can vote against the development plan if you choose, but a motion where, again, by majority of this commission, it's been approved.
Then why, again, I'll ask again, then why are we, why is this even?
Because it's already, the waivers have been approved by a majority vote.
I'm just going on.
Mr. Hampton, I think the the question becomes the the waivers are approved.
Yes.
So that's not a basis for you to make a motion to deny the development plan. If you've got a basis to deny the development plan itself, what was presented in the form of the development plan, that that's what the motion ought to be centered upon.
So the waivers don't matter at this point, they're accepted and that's it?
Correct.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn. We'll return to the development plan motion. Time to get a motion on the floor. The floor is open. Ms. Nassar?
Docket PZ two-three dash zero-zero-six, motion to approve the development plan as presented today based on the fact that it complies with the zoning of the area of C-three and the comprehensive plan development for the area and intent for that area as well as the, that to include the waivers that have already been voted on and approved for the lot size and the minimum parking size, minimum parking waivers that have been approved. This is contingent upon the proposed conditions of approval as mentioned by Jim Urban, the two conditions of approval.
Thank you, Ms. Nassar. Mr. Urban, anything to add? What's your? Mr. Counsel, any anything additional on that? Do we have an adequate motion?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I got it.
Davis, thank you. Question? Ms. Edgar, we'll move into roll call vote.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Ender? Mr. Finney? Mr. Hampton? Ms. Jones? Mr. Winters? Mr. Klingemfuss? Ms. Nassar? Ms. Walzer? Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. Motion to approve the development plan has passed on a vote of ten to one. Mr. Ashburner? Your application has been approved. All right, everybody holding up okay? You need a break, or do we need, or can we keep rolling? What's it look like, guys? All right, we'll take a short break. Five minutes, make it ten.
Mr. Chairman, can we can we get an extra five minutes to review the minutes so we can approve those later?
Okay, so wanna take fifteen? All right, fifteen minutes.
Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, so before we get moving here, I'm not done hearing. Did he say go or no? Go, okay, good. All right, for everyone on the commission, we have some, some coaching from audiovisual resources here that say we're not getting to the mics well enough. All right, so hold them closer to you. When you turn them on, there is a delay. If you keep them on, there's no delay. But get them close, get it on the record. This is what we're using as the official record. It's this audiovisual recording, so it does need to be captured as the evidence and testimony is presented. Any questions that you have, be certain that your voice is heard. Same goes for everybody at the podium. Thank you. All right, Ms. Edgar, would you read the next docket, please?
Docket PZ 23-007, an application has been filed by our partners for the approval of an amended planned unit development, PUD, master plan for Oldham Reserves. The property is located at Eden Parkway and New Moody Lane, LaGrange.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar and Mr. Vogel. You'll have staff presentation.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Brian Vogel, Assistant Director, Oldham County Planning Development. The application that the commission has before it this morning is a request to amend the master plan for the Oldham Reserve. Proper notification was given of today's public hearing, both on the county's website, the Oldham Mirror Newspaper, and then adjoining property owner notices were mailed. Aerial photograph is aerial of the general area, where you see the, the yellow there, that is the specific request that's before the commission today. But the Oldham Reserve property is considerably larger than that, and we'll go into that when we start getting into the development history of the property. To orient the commission, the LaGrange exit is right here. Walmart, a hospital, and then Eden Parkway, which is showing with the date of this aerial photograph being under construction. The Rawlings Group is located here. The recently opened Trilogy Senior Living Center is opened right there. The Louis Dampier Bridge, and then Ernie Harris Parkway. And what this aerial photograph does not pick up is just even a more recent change, is that there is construction right here for the new LaGrange exit. So if you come up north or south on 71, you hit another construction zone. Zooming in on the specific property that's before you all today, it's highlighted in red. It's an approximate 26-acre parcel. If you've been back in the Oldham Reserve area, one of the unique features is there's a traffic roundabout right here. The request is north of that, and the Rawlings Group is located here. And the zoning in the area is planned unit development, which reflects the fact that you guys changed the zoning in 2005, and we'll go over the history of that here shortly. So in April of 2005, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a zoning map amendment and planned, master plan for a planned unit development, which we're referring to as Oldham Reserve. And what you have in front of you there is basically the zoning map for this particular property. When you have a planned unit development, you're, you're basically creating a zoning ordinance and development standards that are unique to that specific property that you guys approved. So in April of 2005, that was done. The requested change today is generally located right here. And this aerial photograph is actually from 2005, when you all heard the request for the original planned unit development, and it certainly reflects the fact that it was undeveloped property. So the LaGrange exit's here, the hospital's here, and all of this, which shows up in this more up-to-date photograph here, was not there. In December of 2005, you all approved a minor amendment, which contrasts with a major amendment. You all have a major amendment request in front of you today because there is a proposal to increase the density and create a new land use and development standards. When it's a minor amendment, it comes before you guys to have you all approve it, but it's not at the same level, and the zoning ordinance also does empower the staff to approve certain minor amendments. But in December 2005, a minor amendment came before the Planning Commission to address some design guidelines on the buildings, landscaping, and signage. You all approved that. And then in January of 2006, the commission approved the first phase infrastructure for Oldham Reserve, which on this is basically indicated in the yellow. It included the construction of a portion of Eden Parkway, the realignment of New Moody Lane and Eden Parkway intersection. And then in February 2006, the Planning Commission approved the development plan for the establishment, Phase One, of the Rawlings Group office campus, which is a three-story building with 154,840 square feet. And then in September 2006, you all approved a minor amendment that addressed parking standards. So the Rawlings Group, Phase One, three-story building right here, this here is the intersection of the realigned New Moody Lane and Eden Parkway. And in January 2015, the Planning Commission approved a development plan for the expansion of the Rawlings Group office campus for a 70,000-square-foot addition with a three-story building located right here. And then May of 2020, you all approved a development plan for the Phase Two infrastructure and the creation of 16 parcels of property that could be marketed and then constructed on. So the traffic circle that you all reviewed was right here. Rawlings is located here. The Trilogy Senior Center is right here, and the request today is roughly in this vicinity right here. And then in December 2020, you all approved the site plan for the establishment of the Senior Citizen Living Center, which is an 84,619-square-foot building with a portion of the building being two stories. So the proposal in front of you all today is to amend the previously approved planned unit development, and the principal request is to create a new land use category called residential high density, with a request to have a maximum density to support multifamily communities of 24 dwelling units per acre. In your all staff report is the specific language that would comprise the amendments to the planned unit development's master plan. On the PowerPoint, it's just summarized, but the, the official document is incorporated as an addendum into your staff report. And when, when the applicants are talking about amending their master plan, that's equivalent to amending the zoning ordinance language for the property that's located in Oldham Reserve. So what they're proposing is the creation of a residential high density district that would allow up to 24 dwelling units per acre. that would allow up to 24 dwelling units per acre. And then you see under the permitted uses, the permitted uses that they're identifying in that particular land use, the conditional uses, and then the development standards in that particular residential high-density district. That the minimum lot size would be 10 acres. They have their setbacks for any construction that would occur there. And then at the bottom, they're under maximum structure height. They're proposing that they could build up to five stories or 60 feet. The second portion of a request to amend a planned unit development is the land use map. So that's equivalent to amending the zoning map, and the request is highlighted in green right here. It comprises approximately 26 acres to support the 24 dwelling units per acre. So just to orient the commission again, Rawlings Group is here, the Senior Citizen Living Center is here, traffic circle is here, and then under construction interchange is right there. The request is to basically, you know, amend the development standards in Oldham Reserve to create a new land use designation of high-density residential, both with the development standards and then also that land use map that showed you where it would be located at. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel. Questions for staff? Finney?
I have a, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I'm not sure whether this is a proper time to introduce it or not. So what do I do?
Oh, we're gonna have to hear it more.
Put it out and go, huh?
He'll put his hand on the gavel when you ask the question and decide whether you're in order. See, where are you going?
The... We're looking for a change in, changing in this proposed unit development. And this was originally designed, or originally put out there to be a development for aiding the tax base for the county. In other words, it would be an industrial, a commercial-type development to alleviate making homeowners and this kind of thing, the base and the tax bearer for the county. To bring in industries that would employ, be an employment-type.
What's your question?
So if, as we change this from a, from a, an employment-based development area to a housing-based area, aren't we defeating the purpose of the development?
If you look at the map that's up right now, and you look in the right-hand column that says land use, this is proposed as a mixed-use development, planned unit development. There are single-family residential areas in yellow. You see the SFL. That's single-family low-density. So what you said is not 100% correct because again, it was proposed also to have residential units in there. And there's a portion of the master plan report that has a different density of eight units per acre. So what you're being asked to consider is a revision to that master plan, which was approved in 2005, so conditions have changed. And specifically, one area only. So it's not changing all the other potential land uses. It's just taking one area only in green.
Mr. Finney?
Goes back to setting precedents, you know, that kind of thing. Are we moving toward undoing what we did?
Well, again, what you did was in 2005.
I understand that.
2023, and conditions are different. And you can, I think you should pause that question until you hear the rest of the presentation by the applicant.
Okay, that was my original question. Am I asking this at the right time?
You're asking a good question. It needs to be answered later.
Thank you.
Mr. Finney, anything else? Okay. Mr. Marsh, please.
Fogel, the highlighted area in red seems to be out in the middle of the area there. Is there, do you have any insight as to why that was located? And staff have any comment as to the location of that?
It's probably something I would defer to the applicants to ask them why that particular site was chosen for the high-density residential.
So nothing that stood out that might cause it?
Anything additional, Mr. Marsh? Ms. Nassar?
So in the prior approval, was there any high-density residential?
It was medium-density. There's a RM, as in medium, RM. And if you park it right there, you can see that's in kind of a yellowish-orange, whatever color that might interpret on your screen. So you look for the RM.
All right, further questions?
Let me also say that in the OC, which is pink, the OC is office-commercial, and especially around the roundabout, that is a mixed-use, where there could, and the master plan report suggests that it could be multiple uses in one building. Retail on the first floor, office on the second floor, living on the third floor, or any combination thereof. So in the overall master plan approval and the master plan report, it does predict a variety of living types in Oldham Reserve.
All right, guys. Additional questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Fogel. Thank you, Mr. Urban. We will now move into presentation from applicant. Let's get your name and address for the record, please.
I am with Adamson Law, PLLC, address 119 South Sharon Avenue, Suite 220, Louisville, Kentucky 40207. And I am General Counsel for the Oldham LaGrange Development Authority.
Thank you. And for anyone who you might have giving testimony, we'd like to go ahead and get them sworn.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Adamson.
And we do have with us our private development partners. Do they need to be sworn?
If they're gonna give testimony.
Okay.
Okay, and if they are uncertain at the moment, we'll catch them on the way up.
Okay. As I mentioned, I'm Jeff Adamson, General Counsel for the Oldham LaGrange Development Authority. I've served in this capacity for the last 12 years. So I've been involved in this project for a long time. The staff report was very thorough. I thought I might just go into the reasons why the ODA board strongly recommends this PUD zoning change. And then I do have with me today David Bizanis, who is the President of the Oldham Chamber in Economic Development, and also the Director of ODA. And then I have with me today, I'll go ahead and give you the names of the folks that are with me today. Chris George, who is Counsel for our private development partner. John Hollenback and Greg Oakley of Hollenback and Oakley. And they also have with them Assistant Ben Turner. And then Talmage Hocker, and his son, Talmage Hocker Jr., are with the Hocker Group. They are also our development partners. So as far as the reasons why the ODA board, and I speak on behalf of them coming before you today, strongly recommend this zoning change. First of all, and this goes to Mr. Finney's point or question. This development was always envisioned to be both an economic development, business park, but also residential. It was, the vision was, and I think we do have Fran Scott with us here today, he's one of the original visionaries, was to have a business park where people could live, work, and play. And the first reason why the ODA board strongly recommends this zoning change is because this project, or this zoning change, is consistent with the original vision for Oldham Reserve.
The commissioners aren't confused. This is not a zoning change.
I'm sorry.
These are revisions to the map and the PUD master plan report. A zoning change means something completely different.
Gotcha. Thank you for the correction, Mr. Urban. Yes, changes to the PUD is what I'm referring to. So this, 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 changing the PUD, moving residential to this 26-acre spot is fulfilling the vision, the original vision of Oldham Reserve. We have, as you all know, Rawlings located very near to where this change is taking place or would take place if approved, and they have 650, 1,650 employees. And then my understanding is the Baptist East is going to bring onboard, not Baptist East, but Baptist Health is gonna bring onboard another 250. And this development, this change will allow the building of multifamily Class A residential that could serve both of those employers, and as I said, help fulfill the vision of Oldham Reserve of providing a place where people could live, work, and play. The second reason is timing. The timing is right for this. We believe that allowing multifamily residential in this area will spur development. There's a lot happening, as you all know, in Oldham Reserve with the ramps coming onboard. I believe it's like $80 million worth of new road infrastructure coming into play, into place. And so we firmly believe, ODA firmly believes, that this change to the PUD will help us spur economic development. And as you all know, ODA's charge is to do just that, is to, is to help ODA, Oldham Reserve, develop into what it was envisioned to be. The third reason is that in terms of maintaining the integrity and the character of Oldham Reserve, this is a limited space, again, going back to Mr. Finney's question early on. It's a very limited confined space. It doesn't turn the entire Oldham Reserve into a place where it's just all residential. It's actually perfectly situated in the, in the development because there's infrastructure in place. So everything is there. It's adequately positioned, well-positioned, for immediate development. So those were the reasons, those are the three reasons why we, why I believe that ODA strongly recommends this PUD change. The last, the last change is simply housekeeping. Changing OCDA to ODA is simply a housekeeping measure. ODA is the title holder to the property, and that just makes the master plan report consistent with facts that ODA is the, is the property owner. And as I said, I have with me today David Bizanis, who may have some comments. And I have with us the private development partners who are available to ask specific questions about this application. Answer specific questions about this application.
Thank you, Mr. Adamson. Mr. Bizanis, let's get your name and address for the record, please.
David Bizanis. I am President of Oldham Chamber in Economic Development. Our office is located at 204 South First Avenue. My wife and family and I are also residents here in LaGrange. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to add to what my colleague, Mr. Adamson, had said, we are excited about the growth of the community and the improvements that have been happening all around our county and even regionally with significant infrastructure investment in Oldham County. One of the primary sources of that infrastructure is, comes in the form of the widening of I-71, the addition of the new Exit 20 interchange, the construction of the Louis Dampier Bridge in 2015, the construction of Ernie Harris Parkway in 2018, the extension of Eden Parkway in 2020, the creation of East Peak Road in 2022 to accommodate the 125 jobs of our Class A senior living facility in Trilogy Healthcare. And so I am here to speak in support of this change to the master plan and believe that the update to this master plan is significant and relevant to the market that is here. In addition to the density of this proposed change, the existing commercial businesses that are also part of the original master plan rely on rooftops and bodies. This is a quality project. This is a high standard for the community and also lifts up the rest of our development community all around the county. So with that, I hope that you will find it to support this change.
Thank you, Mr. Bizanis. Mr. Adamson, is there anything else that you wish to present?
Nothing further. As I said, our private development partners are here to address specific questions as well.
Very much. Is anyone else here present wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Mr. Black, please approach. Get your name and address for the record, please.
John W. Black, 307 West Jefferson Street, Mayor of City of LaGrange. I need to get sworn.
We need to swear him in, I believe.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
As, as the mayor, I just want to come today and talk a little bit about why we're here today and certainly understand Mr. Finney's point of view. He is right in what he said the intent of the park was. But the fact of the matter is, I've been associated with this, with this situation for probably 10, 12, 15 years. And we have fought tooth and nail for 10 or 15 years to try to put into place the needed infrastructure to make this park a success. Basically, what we had from the beginning was 900 acres of land that had no infrastructure to it. So the truth of the matter is, when Hollenback and Oakley hired on, people were expecting things to happen, but probably more than likely, there's a little chance of that happening because basically what we had, we had one half of a piece of Eden Parkway that ran almost to the roundabout, but that's the extent of the infrastructure. So 10, 12 years ago, we said, we gotta have some infrastructure. So that's when we went to work on every governor that's been in office since then. Steve Beshear, Paul Patton, you can name them all, but we begged them all to help us. And we've finally, finally today, as you drive I-71, we hope that that's the last component that, through our developer partners, said that we need to try to make this park begin to fire on all cylinders. So if you drive the interstate, you see what's going on there today. The ramps are taking shape. So I think that's huge for this park. In 2007, Talmage Hocker, he was the original person by himself, Talmage Hocker and Associates, that came to us and said, we would like to help you develop this park. But Talmage, he was basically in the shopping center business, okay? So the front quadrant was what he had envisioned right off this interstate, if in fact we ever got all this infrastructure in, to maybe put a shopping center there. Well, everyone knows, have you heard of a shopping center being built in the last 10 years? Probably not. They're a thing of the past because everybody's buying everything on the internet. So Talmage found out real quick. So Talmage found out real quick that probably the shopping center idea has probably gone short. Then 2008, everybody knows 2008, we had a terrible recession, a lot of developers went bankrupt, so it's just been one thing after another trying to make this happen. Well, then we tried to get the Louis Dampier Bridge built, 15 or 16 million dollars. We got that done. Then we said we needed a way around the park, so we worked on another governor and got the Ernie Harris Parkway done. And then we needed to finish Eden Parkway, so the city and the county together put up about three and a half million dollars, and we've got that done finally. Then we built Peak Road to the east to serve Trilogy, which Hollenback, Oakley helped bring to this park, the nice assisted living home. And then talk about office buildings such as Rawlings, then COVID hit. Well, we all know what COVID has done to office buildings. There ain't no more office buildings happening, you know, because people have learned through COVID, they can probably stay at home and work. So now we're trying to figure out what's next. The city and the county, we share everything evenly in that park. We, we share the income from the compensation tax, we share all the expenses. So I just want the folks to know that you as county citizens, you're benefiting by the fact what we're doing out there, so I want you to understand that. It's right to say that this is a live, work, and play development, and I have been a person who has really, really given these guys fits, okay, because that's the way I am. I said, where, where is the commercial development? We need that. But I guess in the going that we're faced with today is, they have decided that we got to put some type of, other types of zoning in this 26 acres out of the 900 to try to help kickstart this facility and this idea. These apartments are not your typical two-story apartments. I think the older boards worked hard to try to work with them in their vision to create this to happen. I've talked to John Hollenback, Greg Oakley and their team, and they have laid out some nice-looking commercial development in conjunction with this whole front quadrant of this idea. Judge Vogel, I don't know if he's here today, but we, we have to succeed in this park, and we're willing to give Hollenback and Oakley our support because in talking to them, that we talk with them every day, they said, Judge and Mayor, we've been up against so many obstacles trying to make something happen. It's not that we haven't tried. Yes, I wanted to see commercial happen there before any type of residential, but through their development plan ideas, some things that probably I can't even speak to today, I'm willing to stand here today and, and say that I'm hopefully, and praying that this will be a great idea. They assured me that it will be. Supposedly, they're going to try to make this happen in the next year or so. And then in addition to that, there could be maybe some things hinging on the fact that this were to happen. One thing I would say in closing, yes, I think this commission is going to consider today a difference in the maximum number of units per acre. So by doing that, you're basically allowing something to occur in this park that probably the private person in the county doesn't have that ability. So I would ask you to consider if in fact this can make it through this commission today, that you probably as a commission are going to have to give some consideration to the private person as well that's out there trying to develop land and property and buildings because I think the, if I'm correct, Mr. Urban, I think the maximum unit right now is 16? Eight, okay, eight, okay. But I think that's going to be, be given some consideration as we go forward. Otherwise, I would tell you, these guys, they're in this to make money, hoping the city and county is. We started out with $22 million of debt, and the city finally got ours paid off like last, last six months. So we're, we're out of debt, but we're about to jump back in because we have to have more infrastructure in the park, such as sewers, water, data, things like that. So we're trying to set this park up to invest for the long-term haul in the future, well after I'm gone. But I would ask you to maybe, hopefully, consider this application today. Yes, we would like to see some companies versus that application today. However, these fellows are in the business, they sort of know, seem to know what's going on, so I just want to come here and lend my support to the application process that they've come here and asked for today. Thank you.
Chair, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Judge, does he see you back there?
Once again, good day. I think this is the first time in 12 years I've spoken to the planning commission twice on the same day. Happy to be here. I'll try not to repeat everything my brother-in-law and good mayor of La Grange, John Black, said. We agree on a lot of things, we disagree on things that people don't hear about, but we discuss among ourselves and sometimes go together, sometimes go on different paths. Today, we stand together. John said he's given our business partners a hard time. I agree on that, he has given them a hard time. We both made them walk over coals and struggle to, to do business with us. We had an expectation when all this began of exactly what Oldham Reserve would turn out to be. I think many of us thought it would be another bluegrass industrial park with building after building full of employees. But as time has gone on, we found out, well, we didn't have the infrastructure, we didn't have the access, we needed things that people who, who brought businesses to communities really needed. John outlined the steps we've taken. We have worked hard to get where we are, and now that the off-ramps are getting built on I-71, we suddenly have an explosion of, of really solid interest in doing something. We've had visitors, but they've all come by and they, well, you can't get in there very well, there's, we don't have the infrastructure we need. We, we've struggled to do this, and I've stood in pushback on residential development for 12 years, said didn't want any of it. We, we want employers. Well, but things have evolved. We all know the economy is different than what it was, that people working at home and so on, but there are still things happening. I mean, we had, everything hadn't dried up, people stepped and leave their homes, go somewhere, spend some money. So I'm backed down on my position, honestly. I'm willing to give this a chance. I want to echo John's point of view. If we give a high-density opportunity to some people, I think we strongly need to consider it for everybody so the playing field is level. We've tried hard to get businesses, and the complaint I hear most often is, well, I'd like someplace else to go eat. Well, and, and people want, the, the people that provide this type of service keep telling us, we want rooftops, we want rooftops. There have to be enough people coming by to actually spend money in our restaurants and in our stores to justify having them. So it's a chicken and egg situation. Where are we going to go? The people we're working with have been extremely successful in the Blankenbaker Station and down on La Grange Road going into town and other developments. We think they know what they're doing. Again, I say I've been a reluctant passenger on trying to put more residential in there, but I think the point has come where we have to take a chance on it. John, I don't know if he mentioned it, I didn't hear everything he said when I saw in the office that we had a chance to speak, it came down the hole. Rawlings, you know, we hit a grand slam on the first pitch, and he really was in the park before we got the thing going. But, you know, John shows up here every 90 days with a check for roughly $125,000 for Oldham County Fiscal Court. That's half of our quarterly occupational tax from one business. You couldn't hardly get that lucky again. I mean, that is just unbelievable, but our taxpayers in the city and the county are sharing about a million dollars right now from one occupational tax on one business. We need that money. We're not out to get tax directly from people, but we don't want to raise property taxes. We, we don't really want to be in the taxing business, but somehow the money has to be generated to move ahead. You know, it just won't appear from nowhere. So we have the advantage of a lower occupational tax in La Grange than we have in Jefferson County, and we have no occupational tax in, in, in Oldham County, proper, outside Oldham Reserve. So we're trying to come up with what we can do to build this community for every one of us sitting in here. We all want something. I'm convinced this can be a good development to continue and, and get off the ground. We have, we have really the sharpest partners we can get. These guys know what they're doing, I agree with John, and we're going to keep the expectation high, though. The bar is high, it's going to stay high, and we're not caving in to letting everybody do what they want to do. We still, they still have to meet our expectations, and I believe that they will do it. So I, I support this change and hope you'll agree. I think it's needed for our community, we need to move ahead, people are, want to see something happen. And I think once we light the match, I think it's really going to take off. Commerce Parkway is going to take off, we've got extensions there, we're working down on 393. We have people talking to us about sports activities and developments in our county. Some people will be here tomorrow to, to look at things. So there's a lot of good things happening, and in regard to the statement that, well, I don't want anything to happen, I'll just like it like it is, and I'm afraid to move forward. Life is a forward-moving event. We are different today than we were 10 years ago, we're all going to be a little different 10 years from now than we are today. The pace of change is what is a little scary, it's not change in itself. So very few people would want to back up on a lot of things, but we're trying to manage everything that comes with change and do it in a way that's orderly and progressive and secure for our community. So thank you for listening to me. I hope you'll go along with us here and give us a chance to keep this project moving forward.
Thank you, Judge. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of this application? Very well, we'll move into questioning and testimony from those who oppose the application. If anyone wishes to provide testimony or question, or ask questions that oppose this application, please approach. All right, there being none. Sorry. Oh, please, I'm sorry, I did not see you. Yes, please.
Wasn't expecting you to talk, so I apologize.
All right, let's get your name and address for the record, please.
Amy Halliday, 2704 New Moody.
And we'll need to get you sworn.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Please proceed.
Well, as a resident of the area, we are concerned the crime, traffic, the noise, and the lighting, and we're not sure if that's going to be addressed here, or if we're going to be, you know, we pay taxes as well, and we're concerned that it's going to take apart what we've built up in our community, our little section of the world in Meadowbrook Estates and Boric Farms right over there. And so I hope that that's taken into consideration as well. We're okay with development, but we need some sort of buffer to keep our community sanctioned and safe.
Thank you. Okay, anything else to add?
No.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, ask questions in opposition of this application? All right, there being none. We'll move into, Mr. Adamson, do you have any rebuttal or any response to the content presented?
Just one point to make that, that, that as far as some of the questions of, of neighboring or joining homeowners and neighborhoods, the development plans will be approved at a different stage of things, and there will be more than enough opportunity to, to raise those questions and issues at that time.
Thank you. All right, so for the commission, who has questions? Mr. Marsh?
I'll go back to my question of earlier. Why was the particular area selected out in the middle of there? Is there any reason it's not up against a road, or was there consideration?
Mainly because I think our private development partners put a lot of time and expense of their own into figuring out what, what location would be the very best location for a project like this. And the reason why it's kind of off is they have plans for mixed-use commercial all around that 26-acre plot. So, and, and I, if I'm, if I'm speaking out of school, I have the private development partners are here to address the question more specifically, but that, that's my understanding.
So I, I'm envisioning then the possibility of this residential high-density district, and we're focused on the 24 units, but I also see that retail and restaurant are also possible here, public parks, forests, all these other opportunities could possibly be mingled into this after this change. Is that possibly an intention of you moving forward?
Absolutely, and actually the belief is that the multifamily will actually spur, that's the kind of development we're talking about, this project spurring or sparking.
At this point, there is no development plan, so this is changing to that. Thank you, sir.
I could add to that. I would just like to say that the, the original concept of the park from its conception was to be a live, work, and play campus. So the, the holistic approach to the housing, the commercial amenities, and the office users are all a part of this. So when you consider the top two employers of the county being located right there in the Rawlings Group and Baptist Health, Baptist adding another 200 jobs, Trilogy adding 125 jobs, being able to have folks that can walk, get a cup of coffee, walk on into their office job is an amenity and a feature of this park, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bizanis. Who else has questions? Mr. Adamson, I have a question. Get right back to you, Ms. Jones. So with respect to the increase in density that is requested, can you tie that together with the changes in infrastructure in this general area?
When you say tie it in with the infrastructure, you're meaning how to accommodate?
This original plan predated a lot of the infrastructure that's in place. Can you just give us, we've had some of that in loose reference, but I don't think we've really connected those thoughts.
Okay, sure. The, when you consider the pieces and the components here from the Louis Dampier Bridge, I mean, and you think about the original concept, all the way back into 2005, to have this thousand acres be set aside for this type of a development, and then to have the success of the late George Rawlings to come in with 500 employees, high-paying jobs, triple in size, you really created a lot of access issues. All of the investments from the Louis Dampier Bridge, Ernie Harris Parkway, Eden Parkway's extension, and the creation of East Peak Road have all been to accommodate getting in and out of the park. It really wasn't until 2018 that we could even take people through the park without being on four-wheelers. So when you have an access point that had choked off because of all the employees struggling to get in in the mornings, and I'm sure you all remember when we had all of that traffic backing down the shoulder of I-71, very dangerous situation, this new infrastructure is, as it comes on, will relieve that congestion and create opportunities here. And I think, you know, when you have a lot of these folks who are living in this high-density area, the hopes is they'll also be working in the park and won't need cars to, to get around.
Mr. Bizanis, Ms. Jones, did you have a question? Nope, Mr. Klingenfoos? A little closer to your mic, please.
Families, are, are you envisioning this as families with children?
That mic on.
Are you envisioning that this, the family, uh, uh... Are you envisioning that this, the family, uh, uh, as families with children?
Maybe among the people that move into the park, there may be families with children, yes.
In this housing?
Mr. Klingenfuss, anything else?
Add to that, I think that, you know, we don't have a development plan to review yet, but it, the intention is that these are, this is a very high, high-end, potential multifamily project, and so you're, you're going to end up with probably a different type of user. As we know, this is a response to a lot of market changes in how folks are choosing housing today, going from where Oldham County was developed on one-acre lots to folks all around not wanting to manage yards and do those types of things. So I think we're looking at a level of resident that very likely, at the rates that they may be paying to be in a project like this, if they had a family, would likely be pursuing housing, or single-family housing.
Thank you, Mr. Razanis.
And I, and I add is that within the PUD, which we're not changing, is there's a lot of areas for single-family housing, which is where we hope to provide housing opportunities for people who do have families.
For the questions. All right, being none, we'll move into, Mr. Adamson, this is a rebuttal evidence cross-examination from you. Anything you wish to add in this space?
Further.
Thank you. And then on to Ms. Holliday. Is there anything else you wish to add, rebuttal or other questions in, in this connection? Any final statement from you, Ms. Holliday? Please approach, please approach.
I hope that the board takes into consideration the direct impact that that will have on our children that live in the community, and the potential for crime and other uninvited and unwelcome things that could bleed into this community when you have multi-unit complexes.
Thank you. Mr. Adamson, final statement?
Again, just to address that comment, this is a, this multifamily project is a high-end Class A development. Just, I want to make that point clear.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Urban. Looks like we're there.
I, I want to make sure that the commission understands a couple of simple things. This is not approval of a site plan, so if you choose to go ahead and approve the amendments to the master plan, map, and the master plan report, it does not necessarily approve apartments. We haven't heard anything about number of units. It's just about the acreage. It does set the ability for them to propose high-density development, and what's important about that is it's only in one location in Oldham Reserve, in the area in green. Mr. Baxter asked me about meats and bounds descriptions of this 26 acres. They are in the process of creating plats for purchase by our development partners, and those will be approved as part of a record plat. So the 26 acres, there's only one of those tracts that are under consideration for purchase. So with that, unless you have further questions, you're being asked to consider an amendment to the master plan, the map in particular, which proposes a designation of RH, residential high-density, and a particular location. And then there's also, and we haven't discussed this a whole lot, amendments to the master plan report, which actually creates an RH zoning, well, an RH classification within the PUD. There are on page three, some recommended changes. We, again, there wasn't an RH category, so we worked through some of the specifics, not only for land uses, but also for a few standards. So the minimum lot area, as an example, is 10 acres. The minimum lot width is 50 feet. The maximum density is 24 dwelling units per acre, but with a 0.5 floor area ratio. There are setback requirements, and there's also a maximum structure height, which is five stories or 60 feet.
All right, anything to add?
I added everything.
All right, questions, please.
So, question probably for Jim. Does creating this residential high-density create that for future PUD opportunities?
Good question. The, a PUD, when it is proposed, they propose their own, I call them self-inflicted regulations, and somebody could come with a planned unit development proposal that could include this that they chose. What it does not do is change the zoning regulations for other land uses, so individual parcels are still the highest density, and those other parcels is 16 units per acre, which is R4. But if you proposed a PUD or a PRD, which is Planned Residential Development, there is the potential for them to propose, I'm not going to say anything, but I don't really know, they could propose higher density. That would be subject to review and approval by the commission.
Thank you. Ms. Nasser, anything additional? Finney, do you have something? No? All right, Ms. Jones?
A question on page three. It's got the maximum lot coverage for structures 100% of the lot area, but then it also has the setbacks. I don't understand, can you explain that a little more?
He was asking me a question. I think I heard that you were asking about some of the particulars under the standards.
Maximum lot size with a setback.
Well, uh...
How can the structure take up 100% of the lot, but also maintain the setbacks?
We had a lot of discussion about that. It really can't be 100% because obviously you have to have parking as well.
So does that need to be changed, or is that just, does it not matter, or?
It's for your consideration. That was proposed by our development partners.
Okay, further questions? Further questions? All right, if we pass questions, then it's time to move into motions, and we'll go ahead and open the floor for a motion. The floor is open. Marsh?
I move that we approve Docket PG 23-007, the amended master plan for Oldham Reserve to include the requested high-density district, because the proposal is desirable to the community, does not seem to be in conflict in any way with the Oldham Reserve Plan Unit Development's master plan. It achieves the character and objectives that were set out for Oldham Reserve. The community and neighborhood need the facility. I, I agree with the residential, and it's compatible with surrounding land uses, integrity and character of what it was initially presented as, and the public facilities would be a great addition to the county, and potential binding elements I would also want to include in that.
There's, I didn't mention them, but on page five in the staff report, there are three. There shall be no significant changes to the Oldham Reserve Master Plan Report and the Land Use Map as presented at the March 28, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing without review and approval of the commission. And I want to clarify what significant is. Minor changes, a correction to wording or something like that, doesn't change, can be done by the administrator. The second item is each individual site plan shall be reviewed by the Oldham County Planning Commission, and the third is the development and site plans must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval.
Those are the binding elements that I referred to, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Mr. Baxter, do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
I, I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Marsh, is are you including the requirements set out on page three of the staff report, which are the specific things being, which would be the language, I think, that would be incorporated into the ordinance?
Actually, it's page six and seven are the real things. There is, again, as Mr. Adamson said, there's a minor change taking OCDA out of the master plan report, that, that organization doesn't exist anymore, substituting Oldham La Grange Development Authority, and then the Division RH, Residential High Density District, intent, permitted uses, conditional uses, and district property development regulations.
Yes, sir.
As revised in six, pages six and seven. Thank you. Mr. Baxter, we good?
The case, Mr. Chairman, we have an adequate motion.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Mr. Hampton, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Being none, Ms. Edgar, we will move it to a roll call vote.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ender? Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton? Ms. Jones? Mr. Winters? Mr. Klingenfuss? Ms. Nasser? Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Adamson, your application has had the approval of, your application has passed on a vote of 11 to zero. Thank you.
We still have additional business, so.
Yes. All right, you guys ready to cover the minutes?
I want to explain one thing in the minutes on page six. This was in relation to the approval of the McDonald's, binding element number four. This is not what was said in the binding element, but they asked me to make this correction, and I hope you'll accept it. The entirety of it says the main or west entrance will be approved with a left turn exiting the site with the following provision. Should the property on the north side of Commerce Parkway be granted a right-in, right-out-only access directly opposite the west entrance, the west entrance will be modified at the expense of JASS Realty. It would, I stated McDonald's, and they asked me that their McDonald's won't be responsible for that improvement, that the owner of the properties, which is Jazz Realty, would be the ones. So when you're considering approving this ministry, be aware that that was not really what the binding element that was stated, but I would like you to consider making that change.
I believe the silence of, of that is, is evidence that everyone understood that to be what you've just recited. The intent was that, not for the applicant, not for McDonald's.
Correct.
All right. So further changes? Corrections? I know you guys have had a ton of time to review all of this, but, all right. We already get a motion to approve?
No.
All right, let's get a motion to approve on the floor.
Move to approve with the amendment as discussed.
Move to approve and second. We'll go by voice vote, all in favor. Please, it's signified by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. The most, the mint is corrected, are approved. All right, Mr. Urban, last thing.
Brian is going to lead us through this discussion. The first thing to understand about this is that the planning commission has already recommended, well, recommended approval by the legislative body of proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. There has been a large gap in between that, that approval. We never did take it to the legislative bodies. As you might remember, Amy Alvey was doing all the research, and we went to the Study Review Committee many months ago, and then Amy went to the Oldham County Clerk's Office, and we were short-staffed. So we never did get to the legislative bodies. What we chose to do was kind of restart it. So a few weeks ago, we went to the Study Review Committee and reviewed things that have already been through the SRC, and actually things that have already been through the planning commission. So this is, there's various subjects here that Brian will go over. Now, I understand that Mr. Marsh in particular asked a question about can we correct some language in here, and the answer is yes. This would be the body that recommends to the legislative body approval of, and for their consideration, approval of these text amendments. With that, I'll let Brian.
Thank you, Brian Vogel, Assistant Director, Oldham County Planning Development. Jim summed that up really well. Everything that was put in your staff report or be presented on the screen here is identical to what you all heard in November of 2021 or April of 2022, with the exception of one thing I've saw where a word was used wrong and proposed that as a change and, and prepared to point that out. Notification in today's hearing was posted on the county's website, also published in the Oldham Mirror newspaper. The particular text amendments have all been heard and approved by the planning commission in the past. These are the sections that we're asking you guys to, to look at again and approve. The, the history, in November of 2021, you all approved changes to Section 270-050, the school capacity standards. We did, as staff, take that to the legislative bodies, the fiscal court and the Crestwood City Council, but we did not follow up on taking it to the city of La Grange or the city of Pee Wee Valley. So those are, are two legislative steps that need to be done with that. And then the other one was in April of 2022, and it's all of the Section 250-220, Section 260-340, Section 250-210, Section 260-035, Section 260-210, Section 270-050, and Section 335 were approved by you all in April of 2022, but because of, of staffing, we did not follow up on taking that to any of the legislative bodies, so we'll need to do that with all four of them. And I'm going to switch documents here. Okay, this, this is basically just a scan and a PDF of the staff report that you all were provided as part of your packet. Any proposed additions are highlighted in red to the zoning ordinance. Any proposed deletions are highlighted in red and then have a red cross out through them. Each of the, the particular sections, so you know, the first one addresses the private clubs, where some of them are permitted uses in certain zoning districts. In other zoning districts, they are a conditional use. And then the ones where there are, they are permitted uses, there are operation or development standards for them. And then the ones that are conditional uses, which would require them to go before the County Board of Adjustments, also have development or standards for operation. And then we also needed to add a definition to the definition section of the zoning ordinance for that. Mr. Chairman, is your preference to just stop at each section or go through the whole thing?
Certainly, I think it's, it's better if we stop and ask the questions as we pick these off one by one. So on this section, questions? All right, so we'll move along with that one, being reasonably well-understood.
Okay. The, the next section addresses agritourism buildings, establishing which zoning districts they would be permitted uses, which zoning districts they would be conditional uses, and then a section where it provides development standards for agritourism buildings when they are permitted use, and then also development standards for when agritourism buildings would be a conditional use, which would require that they go before the, any board of conditional use, which would require that they go before the, any board of adjustment, the County Board of Adjustment or LaGrange or Peewee if they were proposed in one of those jurisdictions.
Okay, questions? Right?
The next section is golf driving range standards, the one thing that is different from anything that the commission approved in the past. The very first one you see there was just the incorrect use of ensure. So just went in the word processor and put the correct one. Otherwise, it's identical to what you all have heard before, where it sets standards for golf driving ranges, and then also provides some definitions that we would incorporate into the definition section of the zoning ordinance.
All right, questions, discussions?
Mr. Marsh? Point number seven. Would apparel be possible, hats, stuff like that? Do we need to add that, or would that be acceptable or not? Gloves, hats, possibly?
Are you saying like afterward says golf equipment and apparel?
And apparel, something?
If everybody agrees.
That was an issue. And then down in the bottom section where it has a golf driving range, golf drives and putting are two specific things. Do we want to put golf swings, or is there any other word other than just, right there I read that, I can only take my driver and my putter?
Practice range.
Practice swings, yeah. Being a golfer, I just saw that definition. Don't mean to waste y'all's time.
Hope it's a valid point, thank you.
So I've got notes here that in seven, we're gonna add the language and apparel, and then on the golf driving range, I'm not a golfer, so I'm gonna make sure I understand what you're asking to ensure that it reflects on here. You don't want, you think it would be more appropriate to say golf practice facility versus driving range?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, I understand it.
He eliminated the word drive?
Yes, golf, yes, yes, I believe so.
All right, further questions? Ms. Jones?
On page nine, something very minor. Part two, where it says as part of the
Let's finish that last section first.
On the golf stuff.
Sorry.
Do we need to take action on that to adopt those one by one?
All at once, if everybody, we'll go through the corrections.
All right, anything else on the golf section then? All right. Moving forward. Mr. Fogel, let's crack the next one open.
So on the next one, those were actually two different ordinances, one that addressed allowances for when a proposed development, and we're talking about the school capacity standards here. So it made two changes to the school capacity standards. The first one that has been approved by the fiscal court and the Crestwood City Council was that when you have a non-residential generating use, a park, an open space, a commercial office, that you get an allowance towards the residential portion of your development. The second part, which is at the very end here where you see this chart, is one that the commission has approved and has been endorsed by the Board of Education, where we would change the maximum number of dwelling units permitted per year when you have a large development.
And just for clarification, whether it's a single family or a unit in an apartment, they're units. So we aren't distinguishing between the housing type. Call it the number of doors, you know, either a single family or apartment is a unit.
All right, let's circle back to Ms. Jones now, right?
On page nine, part two, I just think that two, before the subdivided land, needs to go with the scratched out.
As part of the consideration two, that two needs to be stricken, stricken. Yes. All right, anything clarification, please?
Page 11, bullet point number three, the applicant can petition the planning commission for revision of the binding element if additional capacity becomes available. So that means after we've already approved it, if a different, approved?
Well, if the Board of Education chooses to build a new school, and it affects the number of units that were approved or a particular development, and there's now more capacity, so they could get more units. In other words, we have a multiplier that actually reduces the number of units you get per year, given the capacity of the school. If they increase capacity, somebody could come back and say, we'd like you to actually consider our development, which is already approved with X number of units, and change that number.
Per year. Thank you. Here. Okay, anything additional? All right, Mr. Fogel.
The last section in April of 2022, you all heard and approved an entire new section of the zoning ordinance that addressed solar energy systems, so basically solar panels where you would generate electricity. It, very comprehensive, a lot of work went into that. If you all have specific questions on that, I would like to be able to confidently tell you I could answer them. I could not, I would look to the Study Review Committee and Mr. Urban to answer that, but certainly a lot of research and thought went into this particular section.
Mr. Urban, do you want to provide any backdrop on that, or?
So the obvious thing is that everything is in red, which means it's all brand new. You don't have any current regulations regarding or standards regarding solar energy installation. And this came from the fact that throughout Oldham County, there's been a large increase in solar panel installations, both rooftop and on ground now. So some planning commission members actually took a trip to the LG&E facility in Simpsonville, I think it is, and that was very informative and interesting. And as we were creating these regulations, we did talk to industry providers, people that do the installation. We talked to the fire department as an example, because on roof-mounted, they wanted to make sure they had at least 36 inches to walk around. If they were fighting a fire, they didn't want to walk on the panels themselves, because it could be slippery or dangerous. We talked about building codes and standards for structural integrity, should you put units upon the roof. We are actually permitting solar installations, the electrical permit side already. Obviously, they connect to electrical systems, so we've been permitting the, just the electrical side, and kind of by default, been asking for some of these standards already, but without any regulation in place. They do only, this does only apply to solar panels, no other form of electrical generation.
So what you'll see there, guys, is evidence that sometimes regulations have to be developed in response to things that change, and this is one of them. Right? All right, any additional questions on this section? All right, Mr. Fogel.
That concludes the staff presentation.
Good, all right. So we have a handful of changes to apply in this respect. Can we take them all as in one motion, Mr. Urban?
Mr. Urban? Let's see, on page eight, under golf driving ranges, we've added in number seven, after golf equipment, we've added and apparel. In the definitions, rather than golf driving range, we've called it practice facilities, and we've stricken drives, golf drives. Did I catch? That would suffice. Okay.
Thinking putting would suffice.
All right, so, great, thanks for that clarification.
Can I make sure, eliminate driving or drive?
Oh, in golf.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Okay. On page nine, we are gonna strike, as part of the consideration, the word two, TO. We'll read as part of the consideration for a major subdivision. And, see if that's it. This is a recommendation to the legislative bodies, as you remember, all of you have gone through at least an hour and a half or so of training with me when you first came on the commission. We're a joint planning commission, we do not create ordinances, we recommend to the legislative bodies that are part of the joint planning commission, that is Oldham County Fiscal Court, the city of LaGrange, Crestwood, and Peewee Valley. As Brian mentioned, we've actually taken one thing through fiscal court and Crestwood, but we'll take everything else through them as well. So it's a recommendation to the legislative bodies for adoption of the zoning text amendments as proposed and amended today.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Urban. So let's go ahead and open the floor and get a motion. Don't be bashful. Mr. Hampton?
I make a motion we approve these changes to the plan?
Recommend to the legislative bodies.
Recommend these changes to the legislative bodies.
Mr. Hampton, Mr. Baxter's had adequate motion.
Chairman.
Thank you, and do we have a second? A second for Mr. Finney, and we'll take this by voice vote. All in favor? Oh, thank you. Questions? And then we'll move into voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Urban. All right. I think that's all we've got for today, guys. We'll stand adjourned. Mr. Finney, please go ahead.
All right. I waited around a whole hour just to be able to tell you all this. April 25th, next planning commission meeting, we do have three items on the agenda, so plan on being here. And then I'm guessing April 27th, will there be SRC? So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Finney?
Last month, I wasn't here, I was in Washington DC, meeting with our senators and congressmen, and this discussion was brought up about the decommissioning of solar panels with our senators on Tuesday afternoon, the same date we had our meeting here. So this item that you see, that we've just had all this red writing on, believe it or not, is in a national discussion. So it is, it is very important. People from other counties in the state of Kentucky are already talking about this quite a bit.
And it's, the scale goes from an individual house, maybe either on a roof or a ground mounted, all the way up to solar farms.
It is an important issue.
Thank you for that input, Finney. All right, anyone? Nothing else could have caused, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.